November the 13th, 2007 is now on or about 5:30. As we do all meetings, we'll start with an invocation. Today will be led by Gregory Fish of Central Christian.
Let's pray. Lord God, I commit to you now, the judge, the commissioners, the public, and just everybody that is on tonight's agenda, and I pray that ideas would come together, that disagreements would be resolved, and that decisions could be made that would benefit this county. But above all, I pray that you would be glorified through all that is said and done at this meeting. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Are you there? Could you lead us in the two pledges, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation under God, one and indivisible.
I don't have anybody that's signed up for public comments, but we do have a resolution that we've been trying to pass out for the last couple of weeks, and the ladies finally made it, so the court will indulge me in having to do Breast Cancer Awareness Month. You all want to... Do you want to introduce yourself to everybody?
My name is Norma Castillo. I'm a social worker for the University of Texas Medical Branch at Galveston at their McAllen Satellite Clinic. And through state and federal funds under the Breast and Cervical Cancer Control Program, we serve ladies that are uninsured and low-income, and they get screened for breast and cervical cancer. And we serve all four counties here in the valley, which is Star, Willacy, Cameron, and Idalko County. And we do get a lot of patients here from Cameron County. So that's why I'm here.
Well, thank you. Well, it's unfortunate that we have any patients at all, but it is what it is. This is a proclamation that was passed back in October, October the 9th, whereby we adopted Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Cameron County. I'll just read a little bit. Whereas in 2007, an estimated 12,120 Texas women will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and about 2,480 women will die of the disease. And nationally, breast cancer is the most common form of cancer in women. And whereas research shows that breast cancer mortality could be reduced by at least 30% if women followed recommended breast cancer screening guidelines, and whereas while all women have a chance of developing breast cancer, women 50 or older are the most likely to develop breast cancer. And African-American women are the most likely to die of breast cancer than any other group of women. And whereas getting a mammogram and clinical breast examination every year beginning at the age 40, a woman has the greatest chance of the successful treatment of breast cancer if it is found at an early stage. And whereas good health routine includes a yearly mammogram, clinical breast examination, and monthly breast self-examination, and because Medicare helps pay the cost of a yearly mammogram for women age 40 or older with Medicare Part B, we proclaim that Cameron County Commission is due hereby proclaim in recognition of the life-saving preventative programs available, the importance of early detection, and the need for increased awareness, October 2007 is Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Cameron County, Texas, approved this 9th day of October 2007.
Thank you.
Are there any items, the consent or travel, that any member of the court wish to take out separately and discuss?
I had a question on number 10.
Okay, we're going to pull out number 10.
Eighteen.
Number eighteen. Anything on travel? Hearing none and sensing none. Do I hear a motion to approve consent items 2 through 18 and travel items 19A through 19N? But we're pulling out item 10 to discuss separately and item 18 to discuss separately. Do I hear motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Gatsa.
Second.
Taken by Commissioner Tamayo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries.
Judge, I'd like to indicate a no on item 4.
Okay, please note on Commissioner Woods, nay on item 4. Any other nays on any other items? Okay, I've been asked to take one item out of order to accommodate Mayor Pinkerton because he has another meeting at the island. That's item 25, so if there's no objection from the court, before we go into executive session, I'd like to move up item 25. Discussion and possible action regarding the proposed annexation of designated area of county property south of town of South Padre Island. Pete, or somebody, the mayor? This has been on before. I think this included Dirty Owls and some other...
Yeah, I believe this included Dirty Owls, which there was some questions concerning their wanting to come in, and they did write a letter requesting it. We then had a meeting that was well-attended by eight or 10 concessioners, including Commissioner Benavides, Pete, David, Javier Mendez, and Joe Vega from the county park systems. Friedman was included as one of the concessioners. We discussed several issues at that time, and the son from Dirty Owls came to the meeting, and as far as I know, and Pete can confirm this, but everything is fine. The letter stands, and they would like to be annexed in.
Okay, Mayor, and that was the message that we got in the last time, but then they had a subsequent letter with some other folks that were there. Where are we with that? Commissioner, do you want to address that?
Yes, the meeting that the mayor is referring to was with all those tenants of the Sea Ranch Marina, and they had questions and doubts in their minds regarding the annexation. But after we all met with them, I think they all had, they were for it, they didn't have any problems with it. I think somebody might have made a comment in front of them or while they were visiting their businesses, and that caused the concern. But after meeting with them, they walked away, you know...
There was misinformation that was given to some of them concerning the sign ordinance and things of this nature, but to my knowledge, everything got straightened out. I believe this item in particular deals only with Dirty Owls, but while we're talking about it, I want to let all of you know that all the concessioners that we met with, and there were about 10, I believe, that showed up, the Murphys, the Marina, several of them that came, and as far as I know, everything is fine. I haven't heard any...
Yeah, the only concern I have at this point is that it was basically placed to us in writing that they did not... I as one don't have a problem supporting this subject to getting something in writing from them saying that they agree with the... I think that was the understanding that we had, that if they want to be annexed, we would go ahead and do that. But until I see something, just like the way they said they didn't want to, that they do want to now, something in writing, so Pete or David or Javier, if you can facilitate that, have them get us, you know, a letter saying that they don't have any problem with that, I don't have a problem supporting it, subject to that condition. If no member of the court wants to make it subject to that, that's fine, but I think we did get something in writing that was pretty explicit.
And are you referring to the letter from Dirty Owls, Judge?
Well, it was a letter from various vendors...
Yeah, from Jackie Conrad, I believe.
And Dirty Owl was one of the signees, so he signed the letter. So I'd like to see it, having him come back and say that.
I'd like to move that we annex them pending receival of a letter of them wishing to be annexed.
Just to counter the letter that we got initially, okay?
May I clarify something?
Yes.
The people that wrote that letter were at that meeting that you held?
I did not receive a copy of that letter. I believe the commissioner did, and Javier Mendez did, so I cannot answer that. I'm only assuming that they were there.
So were they there? Because you were at the meeting, and you got the letter, just like we did.
Actually, we have a letter from Dirty Owl saying that he was in agreement. Then we got an email. I never received a letter. I received an email, and under the email were the names of all the people that, or the businesses that wanted to have a meeting, and they were present at this meeting, including Alfa La Sada's son, and he also agreed at the end.
As long as we get something in writing, I don't have a problem with that.
They were at the meeting, and you feel like they were okay with what was discussed?
As far as I know, they were okay, but I would defer to the commissioner and to Pete, who was there and not there.
Well, we thought they were okay the last time, too. So, I mean, I think, just a clarification, just to make sure that, because there's nobody here from them saying, "Well, we didn't even know. No one gave us opportunity." So, I mean, I believe you, but I think it, I think this makes good sense to have something, something affirmative in writing from them saying they've got no problem. I've got a motion by Commissioner Gatsa and a second by Commissioner Benavides to do it that way. Discussion.
I'd like to ask what our procedures are now, what we need to do. Don't we need to petition the city to do the annexation?
Yes.
Include the areas that we're referring to?
The way I would foresee, the timeline on, not the timeline, but the procedures and the process would be to get the letter that you're requesting, which I think could be done all at one time, with the, with an agenda item authorizing the county judge to sign the petition, asking the town to annex.
The town to...
I believe that petition has been already sent. Right, they're working with Paul Cunningham. There was one problem on the survey that no one picked up on, and I thought it had been taken care of, but the survey included the KOA part, and I don't know how that got in there. But Paul called and said, "Are you aware that the park's in there, and that's GLO?" And I said, "It wasn't supposed to be there." So that's being corrected. And as soon as that's corrected, we get the letter, I would presume that maybe, and whatever you say, Judge and Court, but we could just go ahead, and if the letter is delivered from these folks saying that everything is okay, then the petition, or you could just go straight to the petition.
That's fine. The commission picked up that state land quite a while back.
Pardon me?
The commission picked up that state land issue quite a while back.
Yes, and I just don't understand how that got in there, but...
We can't petition you to annex.
Right, exactly. So we're getting that removed. We'll get the letter, and then we'll move straight to the petition, assuming we get the letter.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Do I hear motion to go into executive session?
Don't move.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, taken by Commissioner Benavides to discuss several items. Item A, confer commissioners' court legal counsel concerning issues relating to the possible acquisition of blocks 1A and 1B, Block 122, Browzel Original Count Site pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning right-of-way for FM 732, Parcel 20 pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcel 1 for right-of-way for the West Rail Project pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item D, confer commissioners' court legal counsel concerning a claim of Timothy R. Floyd for discussion and possible settlement pursuant to Code Section 551.071, 1A and B. Item E, confer commissioners' court legal counsel concerning Sun Guard BiTech Software Support Bill on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to Code Section 551.071, A and 2. Item F, confer with commissioners' court legal counsel concerning Attorney General Opinion Number GA 0578 and concerning possible declaratory judgment, action with regard to the creation and funding of the 444th and 445th Judicial Courts on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to Code Section 551.071, 1A and 2. Item G, confer with commissioners' court legal counsel regarding the release of confidential information to third parties by email on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to Code Section 551.071, 1A and 2. Item H, confer commissioners' court legal counsel concerning County of Cameron versus Cameron County DA Armando Villalobos, Cause Number 2007-10-5130-G for discussion of status and other possible action pursuant to Code Section 551.071, 1A, B, and 2. Lastly, item I, deliberation regarding real property concerning the possible purchase of land in El Ranchito for a community park pursuant to Code Section 551.072.
Judge, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On item 20G.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to be explained by legal why this is an executive session item.
I have a question.
G.
The email issue. It was on last time as executive session, so it's good to ask.
And I would hope that you would clarify it so I can feel comfortable with having discussed it last week and discussing it this coming week.
G.
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 On 551.071, 1A and 2.
Their issue concerns the release of confidential information, which may require the producer letter to create liability for this county.
So creating liability for this county falls under 551.071, 1A and 2?
Two, for sure.
Two is?
Two is, per your attorney, it's the same as if you were a private individual, per your attorney, concerning issues that under the rules of conduct should be deferred to your attorney.
Okay. All right. Will that be in the case? I'm going to come out of executive session. Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, saying by Commissioner Benavides, we are out of executive session. Item A, confer commissioners' court legal counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of blocks 1A and 1B, Block 122. That item was not discussed. Do I hear motion to table?
Don't move.
Moved by Commissioner Woods, saying by Commissioner Tamayo. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning right-of-way for FM 732, Parcel 20. Do I hear motion to acknowledge the payment of $4,086?
Don't move.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, saying by Commissioner Woods. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item C, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of Parcel 1 for right-of-way for the West Rail Project. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
I saw this.
Move by Commissioner Woods, saying by Commissioner Benavides. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item D, confer commissioners' court legal counsel concerning a claim of Timothy R. Floyd. That item was not discussed. Do I hear motion to table?
Don't move.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, saying by Commissioner Woods. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item E, confer commissioners' court legal counsel regarding Sun Guard BiTech Software Support Bill. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
Don't move.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item F, confer commissioners' court legal counsel concerning AG opinion Number GA 0578. Do you have a motion for us, Richard?
Yes, the motion should be to approve the filing of suit in Travis County concerning the issues as set out in AG opinion GA-0578 to contest the opinion and to bring the suit against the necessary state officials.
Okay, do I have a motion to acknowledge that? Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, saying by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item G, confer commissioners' court legal counsel regarding the release of confidential information to third parties by email. Richard, do you want to acknowledge report because you're doing more research on that one, or what's the motion on that?
On F? G.
On G?
G.
The email issue.
Yes, I'm going to do additional research.
Okay, do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
Don't move.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item H, confer commissioners' court legal counsel concerning County of Cameron versus Cameron County DA. Do I hear motion to approve the settlement agreement as filed in the minutes?
Don't move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, saying by Commissioner Tamayo. Discussion?
This is in page 2007-130-G.
As reflected in the agenda item, yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item I, deliberation regarding real property concerning the possible purchase of land in El Ranchito. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of Mr. Mendez and also instruct him to proceed along the terms and conditions as discussed in the executive session?
Don't move.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, saying by Commissioner Woods. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. If we can go back to the two items that were pulled out of the supplemental. Item 10, consideration approval of purchase of equipment for justice of the peace 5-2.
I had a question. I just wanted to make sure, maybe I overlooked something, but do we have, does we have the money for that, or Javier, is that in his budget?
Within his budget, no, ma'am, but as far as the computer-related equipment, you can authorize the use of the JP Technology funds that they collect. And in reference to the, there's a microphone or a speaker system for the bulletproof glass so they can hear on the other side. There's actually funds available within the JP security fee that can be used to pay for that.
And so it's going to come out of, and I know he had discussed this, I think, in open session at one time, about the need for that. So, did I miss something? Where am I coming from?
Which one? Both the technology fee and the security fee.
Oh, okay.
The electric window service microphone would come out of the security fee because with that bulletproof glass that was installed, apparently they can't hear the people on the other side. So this facility...
And it's also a safety issue.
Yeah.
Javier, let me ask you something. When you refer to the, those two fees that are collected by the JPs, does it all go into one pot, or it does?
Well, each fee goes into a pot.
A different pot, I know.
Yeah, correct.
So it's, we're not going to have problems with maybe other JPs wanting to use money from there, and like, how do you divide it, or...
The fees, any use of those fees have to be approved by the commissioners' court.
So they all come to us?
They have to be approved by the court for the use of those fees.
And how much money is in there?
Within the technology fee, this morning, there was 100, the technology, was it 127? $127,000, and the security fee was $46,000 reserves.
What else do we owe, first, that might be pending on those fees? Like the contract with the folks to do the computer system for all the JPs?
Annual maintenance on the HAMR system is, I believe it's $45,000 a year. Out of the security, there's nothing being paid out of there.
Do I hear motion either way?
Motion for approval.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Woods. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 18, consideration of approval to open two new accounts as requested by a planning office by East Conde de la Fund Number 290 and Blackum Pelo Water and Light Fund. You know what the issue was with Commissioner Gatsa on this one?
Commissioner Gatsa pulled it, so I don't know.
Do I hear motion to table it?
Don't move.
Until he gets back. Moved by Commissioner Woods, saying by Commissioner Tamayo to table item 18. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Budget amendments, line item transfers, and/or salary schedules.
Judging Commissioners, I passed out some line item transfers and budget amendments. Laid them in front of your desk. Let me go over them, a couple of them in more detail. First page are basically line item transfers between budgeted line items to cover some insurance issues and also some copier rental for the JP's office. On page two, the very first one regarding the infirmary, they had sent a request of transferring funds from the lab and x-ray line item to equipment. The lab and x-ray item, that line item is used to pay for the mobile imaging to come to the facility to take x-rays of the inmates and also for any labs that they have to send out on the doctor's orders. Last fiscal year, they implemented doing some of those x-rays in-house, mainly at the Capitales facility. This equipment is so that they can do x-rays at the downtown facility, thus eliminating the need to contract out for those, that company to come in and do the x-rays. So that's what that one is for. The other two are just line item transfers. The second set are setting up funding for some juvenile grants and a grant from PD&amp;M and the salary schedules attached to the juvenile grants.
Javier, just as, and that's fine, but if I recall, one of the early meetings that we had, we were going to have, refresh my memory, but I thought we were going to have each department, whenever they're going to come and do the budget amendments and requesting, we were going to have them do it in case we had specific questions versus you trying to shadow box with everyone?
There is someone here from the...
Well, there's someone here now, but I think in the future, whatever agenda items, when budget amendments, you know, I think we agreed that, remember that? That they would make the presentation. You can do this, but they need to make the presentation, you know, so you don't have to sit there and make everybody's budget amendment request, okay? So I think, go back, and I think we did that early on.
Right, so even for the individual line items between, if you'd like, for the insurance? Not that one in particular, but the, just so I let the departments know, because they've asked me, so do I need to be there for this particular thing or not?
Well, I think I need to go back and look at what we agreed to do, and I don't remember off the top of my head what we agreed to do, but I'm...
We asked that each department had presented their...
Their budget amendments.
Their budget amendments.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about, well, you know what? If you're making, if you're making a line item transfer, that's a budget amendment. And so they're going to have to justify those line item transfers, because when they adopted the budget, you know, that's what they did, now they're having to come back and change it. I mean, we can let this one go, but in the future, I want to let them know that they need to be there to stand up and really make their budget, unless you all want to change that, but I think we talked about this many months ago.
Yeah, after the court took that, I sent, I did send out a memo to the departments advising them when they had submitted something that they needed to be at the meetings in case there were any questions.
Okay.
Well, not just be at the meeting.
But, yeah, if you want them to present each one.
That they be the ones that present.
Well, I have not seen anybody up there except you since we did this. But, okay. Do I hear motion to approve the budget amendments, line item transfers, and the salary schedules that are enclosed?
Don't move.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, saying by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 23, approval of claims. Any questions on the claims? Please note my extension on the two that I provided to you, are you there? Do I have a motion to approve the county claims as presented?
Don't move.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, saying by Commissioner Woods. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Approval of minutes for October the 16th, 2007. Have the court members had the opportunity to look at the minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I hear motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Woods. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 26, discussion and possible action to renew annual windstorm and hail insurance coverage for 2007 through 2008 from sole source provider TWIA through licensed insurance agency Coleman, Hall &amp; Heinz. Rob?
Well, I'm going to recommend that you put it out for RFP with the knowledge that you'll be without coverage till the RFP's done.
And how long of a period is that?
Well, we were going to do it with all the others, so it would be a couple of months.
Why would we be...
No, go ahead. I think it's a good question.
Well, the question I had was it being a sole source. We're being advised that this is a sole source, and now we're saying put it out for RFPs.
My question was going to be, I don't think it's a sole source. Well, you can get, you can get the windstorm coverage from probably any number of insurance agencies, but they'll be price prohibited. This is the source of last resort because it is, it's covering the buildings and structures that are on the island. And anybody else bidding it will be astronomical charge. And we know that how? Well, just from past experience, but we can, that's, we're saying it isn't a sole source and we're, because of that, we're recommending you go out for bid. Just with the knowledge. You, what you could do is you could renew it and go out for bid and then they allowed you to, when you bid it, to get your dates all situated to be the same, you can cancel it and renew it with a new bid. Judge, Commissioner's problem with that is it's a seventy-five thousand dollar purchase and it is, insurance is specifically required under the County Purchasing Act to be purchased by an RFP and so if you authorize the purchase, you'd still be authorizing a seventy-five thousand dollar purchase even though if we, then we go out for RFP, they agree to cancel the contract and go with the new RFP. But the problem with that is right here and now, you'd be authorized a seventy-five thousand dollar purchase. That's why we're recommending the RFP.
We should have thought about this. So how long are we going to be without insurance coverage? You said a couple of months?
That's when we were gonna go out for all the other policies.
Now, when was that?
When y'all asked us to put RFPs together for all the other insurance.
Okay, and why didn't this one get included in the?
We've never included it before.
So how long does it take to prepare for RFPs? Because I know we discussed this at least a couple of months ago. I know I called somebody in your office and they told me they were working on it.
Yes, they are. They have to get all the auto, the auto insurance, they have to get all the autos listed, they have to get all the driver's license from all the individual drivers and all those schedules put together. Some of the departments haven't been getting us back the information. They have to give the buildings' policies, you have to get the square footages and all the buildings and the materials and makeup of the construction of those buildings and putting all that together for them in the RFP is what's taking time.
Wouldn't those be in your records already, Mr. Harman? I mean?
Some of them are and some of them are new, new buildings and we've built quite a few new ones lately and just getting it all put together is just taking some time.
I think I had asked you before, like, when you go ahead and renew, subject to the RFPs going out and if we were to select another company that you all go ahead and pay the premium, I guess, an annual premium, we can't go month to month?
No, this, this particular, the TWIA doesn't do a short-term policy. They only do the full-term policy and they, but they will cancel and then pro-rate you back your, what you didn't use. Are we mixing different policies here because if I understand it correct, and correct me Commissioner, you're asking why it would take two months to do this?
This and a bunch of other stuff that we've.
Because, yeah, the other one on the auto and all, we talked about months ago and that probably should have already been out. I understand if we weren't intending on doing this by RFP until tonight, but this one has nothing to do with automobiles, it's simply structures. So I can see this one taking a couple of months, but the other one should have already been done. We could go ahead and do it, but then it'll have a different renewal date. I mean, we were trying to get them all the same, but if it's y'all's wish, we can go ahead and do it earlier and it'll get done quicker. Which one? The one we're talking about on this agenda item. We've already been working on the other one for months. Well, they take time and they, they don't renew at the same time as this one does. They renew like in February? I believe so. February, I think, because someone bid last year, or actually this past February, an unsolicited bid on automobile policies that came in apparently less than what we were paying, but we ignored that. I wouldn't know, I wasn't involved in that.
Okay, so what y'all wanna do?
We don't have much of a choice.
We need to go out for RFPs.
Okay, so we're gonna go out for RFPs and I agree with that, but we are going to be without insurance coverage during that timeframe. When does, when does this, the existing policy expire or they're already expired?
They're expired on the first.
The first of?
November.
November.
So we're gonna have different expiration dates anyway, even if we did this tonight. Well, we're still in the grace period on this one.
Thirty days.
Yes.
But that wouldn't expire until February?
No.
A grace period through November?
Yeah.
So actually, this should have come before.
Then we still have more.
Okay, do I hear a motion to, I guess, table? I guess we gotta table this.
With motions to go out for RFPs.
Okay, but this particular item needs to be tabled. Now, can we give them the authority to go out and, and go out for RFPs under this agenda item?
Yes, you can. I mean, the, remember the notice to the public has to be the subject matter of what you're discussing. It doesn't limit you to doing just exactly that, as long as a member of the public can see you're discussing the possibility of renewal of annual windstorm insurance. The fact that you're gonna do it by RFP doesn't change the notice.
But let me hear a motion to table the renewal, windstorm and hail insurance coverage and instruct the auditor's office to go out for proposals on this insurance coverage. Now, have you already, let me hear a motion for that first.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Let me hear a second.
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, okay. So then.
You wanna do it as soon as possible or?
Well, yeah, I would think so.
Don't worry about matching up the date.
We haven't worried about it for years, so why worry about it now?
Well, that's.
So let me ask you, have, has anyone in your office or in purchasing started the process to develop the RFP?
Yes.
Okay, so when do you anticipate actually getting it ready and sending it out?
Hopefully by the time y'all have your next meeting, well, not Friday, but the one after that.
Okay, so you expect it to go out and then you're gonna have thirty days for people to develop an RFP? So we could, we could have this insurance in place by December the 15th?
Hopefully.
Maybe? So we'd be out thirty days?
Right.
Well, not even that, because you say there's a grace period, then we'd be out maybe two to three weeks. Okay.
Fifteen days, actually.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 27, discussion and possible action regarding the 2007, 2008 equipment list?
Judge and Commissioners, as part of the backup on this item, and mainly the purpose of this was, when I was preparing the memo that I send out every year for the departments to submit their requests, I got the most current lease schedule from the auditor's office. That's what's included in the backup. For the past few years, what we've been trying to do is kinda keep the payments level. We're adding as stuff is coming off. If you'll notice on the schedule, the payments that we just made and then the payments that are due October of '08 in Public Works, it's actually increasing slightly. And for the General Fund, it's only a slight decrease of twenty-three thousand dollars, I believe. So that means anything that we add this year to the equipment list or that gets approved on the equipment list to be financed beginning next fiscal year is going to require additional funding for the payments. I just wanted to make the court aware of this and I guess get some sort of general direction because, you know, each year, the list goes out and comes back and, you know, between Roden Bridge and General Fund, it's three million dollars or what have you, and we always have to cut it down from there. This year, we know what the situation is and I guess to let the departments know ahead that what the court's intentions are, that it's gonna be a real, if that's what the court's intention is, a real tight list or bare essentials or maybe not put out a list at all. I just, I guess, need some direction from the court on this.
The thing is that I don't know that any, any department, at least in the different precincts, asks for anything that is not essential. That's, that's the scary part. You know, I mean, to tell them, ask just for what is essential is, I mean, what are they gonna do? I mean, I'm sure that none of them ask for anything that is not essential.
Well, as far as the precincts, I couldn't answer that. I know on some of the other, with some of the other departments, there may be things that maybe are, may be essential, but say, they don't necessarily, they can go another year before it needs to be replaced. Say, yeah, it needs to be replaced, but it can be put off for another year or we can get by for another year or not. But I, I don't know that. I haven't sent out the request from the departments, so I haven't received anything back. The only thing that I did put out was because of timelines was for the law enforcement vehicles, because if we're gonna move forward with that, there is a cutoff date for submitting those orders. Everything else pretty much gets bid out on separate timelines as purchasing puts those out. So I can send it out as usual and then soon as we get it back, then cut it down from there or if we want to upfront, just let the departments know that it may be more restricted than in years past.
When you talk about law enforcement vehicles, are you including sheriff, constable and park ranger?
Yes. And mainly the cutoff date is on the patrol cars themselves, on the pickup trucks and stuff. There's not so much.
Let me ask a question. On the Public Works of the 975, how much was budgeted when we adopted the budget?
Oh, actually, we already made this October 2007, the nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. That payment was just made. So the 975 is next October, so that would be what will be addressing during this budget cycle.
Right, so that's, that's what we already have, and the same thing with the General Fund, that is what we already have committed.
Correct.
Okay, so anything that, and that's, let's go back to the '07. We adopted the ballot, the budget based on those specific numbers, okay? So now we know what the '08 numbers are going to be based on existing assets that we have.
Correct.
Okay, so then, I mean, I think that we, we just continue, I mean, they can provide their, their list, but we have to factor in that whatever we acquire has to be added to those two numbers.
Correct.
And we just shifted a half a penny to the Roden Bridge to generate a little over, you know, six hundred thousand dollars. So we've got some, some maneuverability there, but whatever dollar we spend for equipment, it's a dollar or less that we can spend on materials. So that's, that's just a balancing act that we're gonna have to do now. We've got a lot more latitude, I believe, in Roden Bridge. We don't have that latitude in, in the General Fund.
Correct.
Because we don't have, you know, we lost half a penny and we may have to bump it up depending on how these, how this court situation goes. So we're not gonna have that flexibility in the General Fund, but to ease the commissioner's concerns in Roden Bridge, you do have a little bit of latitude with that number. So I would, I would consider, I mean, I would focus on, on Roden Bridge specifically, more so than the, more so than the General Fund and we'll just see if we can work in the numbers. You know, Pete, I think you don't have any idea at this point what our, what our toll numbers look like. See, I mean, and so we're not gonna know till about February or March as to whether we're up, down or where we are budget-wise on that and that's, obviously, that's a, that's a critical part. So let everybody request all that they want, I mean, that's fine, but, but, and again, I think the department heads pretty much, I think, this year worked real well with us, all the elected officials worked real well with us this year. And just, you know, ask them to continue that diligence and, you know, let them look at the numbers. This is what we've got to spend if we wanna keep, you know, the tax rate where it is and things of that nature.
And I think with Public Works, Mr. Adal works extremely well with all the foremen, I'm sure, and, and he can kind of help have an oversight of that.
We've also been able to add to Public Works' equipment and things through the Ponya program by doing the work in-house and letting some of those funds pay for the payments and pay for the equipment that will ultimately be ours and our use alone once the project's over with.
Okay, can I answer your questions?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to, to acknowledge Mr. Villarreal's report?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Benavides. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 28, discussion and possible action regarding the 2007, 2000, I'm sorry, hold on. Discussion and possibly regarding the 2007 Cameron County Employee Holiday Party. The reason that I place this item on the agenda is because our office is starting to get, receive calls about this and I will tell you that from, from my perspective, what's been done in the past was the, the county would solicit funds from vendors. And I fundamentally have a, a problem with asking people that we do business with, such as vendors, you know, to give us five, six thousand dollars, you know, to pay for food or whatever it is. Elected officials in the past have been asked to contribute a hundred bucks or whatever it is, just, you know, something small. So we have a decision to make. I will tell you that, that I feel uncomfortable asking vendors for, for money, especially those that we're avoiding contracts to. And so I just wanted to bring this up to you all and see what you all wanted to do and how y'all wanted to handle this. I've got Richard looking into the, into the idea of maybe the county financing it next year if we can legally do so. Or if y'all wanna undertake the responsibility of, you know, soliciting monies from vendors, I will tell you that I will not do that. So it just kinda depends on what y'all's thoughts. Now, if everybody, member of the court wants to pony up, you know, three thousand dollars or four thousand to, to do a countywide party or ask every elected official to, to do that, then I think that's fair. If everybody, you know, if everybody participates equally. But we called around, you know, with other counties and other counties don't have anything. Hidalgo County was having something, but, but the county judge was paying for that himself and I'm not gonna do that. But other counties did not do it. The school district doesn't do it. I think the city would budget.
The city does it.
Yeah, the city budgets, you know, but again, they have a whole different set of rules. And I think, Richard, you may wanna explain that little bit, but the cities have a different set of rules than, than the counties do. Anyway, this is here for discussion to gather your thoughts and see what y'all wanted to do or how you wanted to do it.
What I wanna know is, do we have an idea what percentage, I know we have so many employees in the county. Do we have an idea how, what the percentage is of the employees that come to the party? Or is it just the same group of people that come every year and have a wonderful time? Do we have any, anything that we can gauge that by?
I really don't know because in the ten years that I've been here, I've only been to one party and that was the first year I was here, so.
I think maybe, you know, tomato, tomato, we've got it here on the agenda as a holiday party. I think we always call it an awards banquet because that's also where we recognize the employees who had five, ten, fifteen, twenty years for the service. And personally, I think the decision's already been made this year because I don't think you can find a venue for anything this year at this late date or if you're gonna have entertainment, I don't think you could find that at this late date.
Well, how?
When you have a need for two thousand or however many people it is, eight hundred or nine hundred.
You don't get two thousand people there. I think the count that I got was maybe around four hundred or five hundred that went. The venue's not, the venue would not be, would not be the problem because, well, on a weekend, it would be.
They are right now.
On a weekend.
Most of them are booked for the holidays.
Yeah, so, but the issue is really how we wanted to fund it. I mean, that's, that's the issue, how we wanted to do it. I will tell you, speaking to my staff, it took a lot of their time to do it and we have an issue about you. You know, I know that the awards banquet was, was a way to get around it, but I mean, everything from, you know, getting door prizes to trying to find the money to do it, it was about a fifteen thousand dollar deal as I understand it, I mean, based on the numbers that I got.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
I think that, for instance, that the service pens, we ended up giving a lot of the service pens, and I think, Pete, I think you were there, because some of the people that were gonna get them didn't come to the, to the party. And quite frankly, I think it meant a lot more to them that they were there with their peers at the warehouse and they got.
I think maybe we could do something here. We could do it here.
At a meeting. I think, I think to be recognized in a setting like this, I would think, would mean more to them than, than at the party where people are talking and really are not listening to anyone that's up there at the mic.
Well, I just think that somewhere we need to recognize these people who have provided the service to the county for periods of time.
We can do that. I think we can do that as a.
But I think here it would be great.
As a regular agenda item, at a regular meeting, maybe the last meeting of the year.
I would recommend that.
I think the issue here was, was basically because we were starting to get the calls and, and departments kinda have their own thing, you know, kind of throughout. The only difference is that I just did not feel comfortable, and really it wasn't the past, it was the county judge's office who would solicit all the donations, you know, from, you know, from different vendors and I just had a problem with that. Unless, one of y'all wanna undertake? Unless, one of y'all want to undertake that and do it, that's fine, but I had a problem, you know, me doing it for that. Richard's going to look at maybe budgeting something next year if legally we can do it. I think, Richard, go ahead and talk, Richard, because we've talked about this a couple of times.
Well, I've looked at it, Judge, and what you run, the problem you run into is the constitutional provision of providing a gift, it can either be in kind or money. And the nearest thing, either in AG's opinion or case law that I've found, are discussing either end of the year bonuses or, you know, payments to employees after the service is rendered, and that's strictly prohibited by the Constitution. In order, for instance, to award a bonus to employees from a public, any from a county, you have to have very specific policies in place on how you're going to do that. In other words, if they reach certain performance levels or it's a policy in place that says at the end of the year they'll get a bonus of so much money. That's the only way you can legally do it. You can't let them perform the service and at the end of the year say, you did a good job, we're going to give you some money. That's a gift, prohibited. Well, I find no AG's opinions, I find no cases on the issue of a party of any kind. However, following the trend of those opinions in those cases, I think the one way you could possibly do it is if you planned as part of the compensation package, if you planned and budgeted a party for the future. So at the end of the year, as a reward, you gave it as a budgeted item as part of the benefit. I would caution that I would, at the same time, if we do that, ask for an AG's opinion or ask the district attorney's office to request an AG's opinion on whether or not that's consistent with Article 3, Section 52 and Article 3, Section 53 in the Texas Constitution, because it's pushing the limit, frankly. But that's the only way I can see that a county can provide a Christmas party to its employees.
Well, Judge, do we need to put an item of the agenda if it's in reference to the service pens? Because I do want us to do that.
Yeah, I think we can work on that. Who, is Manu still here? No. Would he be the one that had the act?
Yeah, we can do that administratively.
Can we do that? And maybe want to schedule that maybe for the last meeting of the year and have it here and everybody that's-
Exactly. Have it here, have their families come and I think, I think we can do a good job of that.
Now, that could be a one agenda item issue, it'll be a long meeting, but we can do that, maybe just have a couple of items, but the focus that evening should be, should be the employees at that time.
And in that honor, and maybe, you know, I'll donate for refreshments, heck, I'll furnish the refreshments.
Okay, we can do something out there if you want.
Yes, out there, and I think it'd be very meaningful, their children can come with them. So we need to get that on the agenda.
You want to do that, Pete? Okay. Any further discussion, Commissioner? All right, do I hear a motion just to acknowledge a discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item 29, discussion and approval of amendment to the Cameron County Computer Use, Electronic Access Policies and Procedures. Richard?
Judge, this is the one that, the item that I believe Mr. Garza requested.
Oh, that's right.